Yeah, but if it was, I would say that all you have to do is to look back at the nomination papers for everyone here and to see if there was any political nomination.
No, the nomination papers don't normally have or don't always have political affiliation with the boroughs. It's a simple request, surely, so that we know whose political affiliation is Labour, who's Lib Dem, who's Conservative?
Yes, I'm sorry, our agenda is modified tonight because we're in this pre-election perdu. So it's for you to find out by just by looking at the nomination papers at the election, whether there are any descriptions that would imply that they are a member of the political nominee. I think we might... Would you like to say something?
Yeah, I've been in Right Hand Council for two years. As far as I know, there's only two people who are on this town council who actually stood as party political candidates in the last election, and that was Nancy and Michael. Michael's now left the party which he stood for as a candidate. So actually, there's only one person left on Right Hand Council who is sitting here that's a party political person. I certainly have voted on opposite sides of issues from other colleagues on this council who happen to be in my political party on numerous occasions. I'm not aware of any time that we've whipped on any particular issue because we don't have a whip, because we don't sit here responsibly representing for this Right Hand Council. So I'm going to do this back to you, sir, because you're making a lot of accusations. Which issues do you think have been divided on party lines?
Well, the last planning meeting that I attended when I was...
We don't want certain planning committee.
I know, but this was an example, is where I was trying to put forward a bid for some flags along the front, and I was told that I wasn't allowed to represent. And the chairman said immediately, "We'll tie this over to the next meeting before I have a chance to say it." And it was three Labour, no, it was two Labour and a Lib... that supported that view.
And you think the Island White Party has a view on what wish that flag is in the theatre?
I believe very often if there's a Labour member that wants to cross something, the Labour members at the council will do the same.
So, look, I mean, my...
You may interrupt, but this is very serious.
I'm the chair of the Island White Party, and I can say with some degree of confidence...
You're a Labour candidate.
I can say, I don't say... I think we're just going to knock it out.
Chair, this bloke's mad. Can we just shut him up?
I think we should be just a bit more courteous than that.
That's exactly the attitude. You cannot, you cannot shut up residents.
Can we, John, can I just...
I don't want to represent residents.
John, can I just say, I and Tim and quite a few others, we've been on this council since the first ten years. And there's, we have never been any politics in the decisions, in the planning committee or the finance committee. There's absolutely no...
That's what you know those believers are, that's all. Why are you making such a fuss about this?
Through you, chairman, if anybody's interested, I'm a retired shopkeeper. That's what I put on my nomination paper, and that's what I want to let you know. Forget the party, we're not a Labour party. I'll show you a sporky point during your appeal elections. Better, better, all bloody night.
Yeah, yeah, I think I'm going to stop all party political questions because we are saying in pre-election perdu.
So you're refusing to allow them?
Yeah, if you want to write in, then you can try. We'll wait until next meeting. Any more questions?
I thought you knew why UPTBC women are being allowed in the conservation area.
Yeah, I love right council, we are just advised on planning. The planning authority is the Isle of Wight Council, and we have no input to the rules.
I'd like to say something's out of town, actually, because an email from Lee Burnham, who is a conservation officer, he explained he wasn't an expert on sustainability of UPTBC women versus wood. And I think that the conservation officer, if that's anything you should know about, tricky that. And now it's not only the repair activity, it's the whole environmental catastrophe of the past. Yeah, it seems a bit, it seems woolly thin, and it's tall. I mean, why? I'm surprised they're even allowed.
Well, I think, I share your views on casting and support wood, but that's the fact of life, it has been for the last 20 years. But we are not...
Exactly.
Yeah, we will pass on your message. Diana, would you like to just see how we go?
Because the other question more appropriate would be addressed to the planning committee. So maybe that can come to me too. I know this is... I know the situation room you're referring to, and I think if you remember correctly, or when people know if it's for the House of Commons. I think you are right, I can't so objected to that application on those and other grounds. So it's, as Martin says, it's a just, the final decision is made by the Isle of Wight Council. But if you want to bring it up again, I suggest you bring it up at the next planning committee.
But how can I not get away with it?
Well, that, I'm sorry, I think this is something that's not appropriately discussed at a full council meeting.
Well, if that's not appropriate, what is? I mean, that's what we're about, we need to look in the heritage aspect of Rye.
No, and you see, that kind, those sort of issues are responsible in the planning committee. We have a position statement that says our opposition to things like that. So I think we can follow it up very happily at the next planning committee meeting. But I'm aware of your correspondence, following your correspondence.
It's all good, thank you.
Thank you. Another question? Hello? Thank you. We will proceed to the agenda. Item one is the election for mayor, to elect the mayor for the coming year. So can we have any nominations, please?
I'll propose yes, Michael will be elected.
That's all, please. Seconding. Any further nominations?
Yes, I'll, I'll propose, um, chairman will be elected.
I'm going to decline, I think that's all right, thank you.
Okay. Any further nominations? Okay. So, seconded? Yes, so, yes, would you go, so then there's a failure?
I have a name file, please, chairman.
Name goes, keep it up. Okay, that has passed. Right, congratulations, Martin.
I, Michael, first of all. I, Michael, Lily, have been elected as mayor of the town council of Rye. Declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code of conduct which is expected of members of Rye Town Council.
Okay, thank you. I think there was a request about, from the public, which was about what the mayor would do on their candidates. I just to thank my colleagues for supporting me. My vision of Rye goes back as a child, when I loved this town, and I love it passionately still, and it's where I will die. And I want to see over the next year, a real community spirit of people coming together from all walks of life, from Haylands to Elfield, I know Rye needs an Elfield, and all parts of this town to come together, because it's a critical year. There's issues of interchange, there's issues about coming out of austerity. There's a whole range of important things for our people. And I want to, in that year, bring people together and make it our town. Thank you. I do just wish to thank councillor Ross, because I know that he has a love for this town as well. And I wish to thank him for all his hard work in the last year. So thank you. The next item, item three, is election of deputy mayor. Please, is there any nominations? Thank you.
Councillor Lyons.
Thank you, is there any seconded? Nancy Crawford, thank you. Do I have a nomination for anyone else? Yeah?
Councillor Sagsford.
Councillor Sagsford, seconded? Councillor... Your second individual, okay, thank you. We have two seconders. Right, so I just go straight to the vote for councillor Lyons. Seven. And for councillor Axford. Okay. Councillor Axford. I use my cards and vote for councillor Axford. Councillor Axford is duly elected as deputy mayor. Would you like to come up and get your chair?
Right, this is my declaration. I, Adrian Axford, having been elected as deputy mayor for the town council of Rye, declare that I take that office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code of conduct which is expected of members.
So we're on to item five. Wish to note and welcome councillor New Temple, who successfully won the fire election in Rye West. Welcoming, thank you. Item six, apologies. Okay, seven, declaration of members' interests. To receive any declarations of pecuniary or non-pecuniary interest, personal related to items on the agenda, and to remind members to complete new register of interests if necessary. Okay, will you do that at the council office? Anyone who's got any interest to declare?
I have a craft in white hardware. It is long.
Any others? No, we'll move on to requests for dispensations.
None, I see, chairman.
Thank you. Item nine, code of conduct. To note the town council adoption of the attached code of conduct. Has everybody seen that? Okay. Item ten, standing orders. To note the attached standing orders for Right Hand Council. Has everybody seen it? Noted, thank you. Item eleven, financial regulations. To note attached financial regulations for Right Hand Council, and to note the previous approval given for a payment card. Noted, thank you. Item twelve, 2019/20 budget. To note the town council's approved 2019/20 budget, copy of which is attached to the agenda. Noted, thank you. Thirteen, appointment of bank signatories. To note the appointment of the authorised signatures for town council banking arrangement as required under clause five of the council's financial regulations. Noted. Fourteen, appointment of members of the planning committee. Would like members like to, that would like to be on the planning committee, like to show their hands. Okay, we have councillor Stevens going over that. So I've got councillor, with all, sorry. Councillor Wakeley, yeah. Councillor Jordan. Councillor Farrell. Councillor Chapman. Councillor Conyers and councillor Ross. Yes. Fifteen, the appointment of members of the finance committee. Again, can I have a show of hands, people like to be on? I'll go around the other way this time. Councillor Jordan, councillor Farrell. So have we had anything from councillor? Okay. So we have fifteen members on the finance committee. Sixteen, the appointment of members to the allotment management committee. Can I have any nominations for the allotments? Councillor Adams. Councillor Ross. Councillor Temple. I mean, I... I'm going to tell a lot of them, thank you, thank you. As I do have an allotment tomorrow. Seventeen, appointment of members to the Rye, to the Network Rye Steering Group. And the, this is basically our wonderful youth service, which have that. I have councillor Wakeley, councillor Sue Lyons, councillor Adams, councillor Ross, and myself as well. Thank you. Reappointment of members to the personal panel. To note the reappointment of the mayor, deputy mayor, chair and vice-chair of planning, and chair and vice-chair of finance to the personal planning. Is that noted?
Noted.
Twenty, the appointment of members to Rye in blue... Oh, sorry, apologies. The reappointment of members to the general purposes working party. To note the reappointment of the mayor, deputy mayor, chair and vice-chair of planning, and chair and vice-chair of finance, and the general purposes working party. Is that noted? Thank you. Twenty, the appointment of members of Rye in blue steering group. We've got councillor Lucy, any other members would like to be a member of Rye in blue? Would like to see? Okay, so we have councillor Jordan, I'm sorry. Any other members? Quite important? No? Yeah, toss the chair, thank you. Twenty-one, the appointment of members of working parties, 2019/20. To agree the membership of the following working parties. Rye Harbour Working Party, I myself. We've got councillor Wakeley. Councillor Critchley. Councillor Jordan and councillor Henry Adams. This sensory impairment working party. That's right, and we've got councillor Lyons and councillor Wakeley. The councillor Stevens, any others? No. The honours working party. We've got councillor Chapman, councillor Lyons, any others? Need some more. I will put myself as well. Any others? Can I encourage? No. Twenty-two, the appointment of members to outside bodies.
I mention there is a correction to this agenda item. The representative to aspire that appointment will be made by the finance committee. So please strike that to the future agenda.
Okay. I think we've already made that decision, councillor.
We don't need to be red, right?
Okay. Twenty-second, one representative and one deputy for the Island White Association of Local Councillors. I'm not... Jordan? Okay, would you like to be the main person, Diana? Phil, do you want to be deputy? So Phil's a deputy, okay. One representative to Rye Business Association. I would like to restand for that. One representative of Rye Carnival Association. At the moment, it's councillor Farrell. I mean, I'll cover it for the time being, okay? Thank you. One representative and a deputy to the Water Sign Community Trust. New Temple, yeah. Any deputy for that? Who, you'll enjoy. One representative, they're a very good bunch. One representative to Rye Saints Football Club. Alu? Thank you. Three representative to the Rye Age Friendly Island Initiative. Diana, to continue, I think councillor Lucy Arne is also. Okay. Can we, anyone else? No. One representative, one deputy to the Island White Civil Military Partnership. Councillor Chapman. Any one for the deputy? No, thank you. One representative and deputy to the Community Safety Partnership, Night Time Economy Meeting. I have a... Nancy? Any deputy, Mr.? Two representatives to the Island White Council's Rye We Generation Working Group. I'll just put myself forward. And I've got four nominations, okay, so we've got councillor Critchley, councillor Jordan, councillor Farrell. Yes. I, I think at the moment, it's actually two from each organisation, and I think it's about keeping that balance. Shall we go for a vote for that representative? Okay. Okay, so we have a proposal for Phil Jordan, seconded by councillor Chapman. Councillor Critchley, second, Sue Lyons. Do I have a proposal for councillor Lily and councillor Farrell?
You could go anyway, you could go with me. No.
Okay, and do we have a proposal for Nancy? Proposal Nancy, okay. Do you have a second vote for councillor Farrell? Okay, so... Right, can we have for councillor Jordan? A vote for councillor Jordan. Can I just pass this over to eight?
Hello. Sorry, the mayor is one of the candidates and it's probably appropriate that I chair this particular item. So we've got four candidates. Councillors Jordan, Critchley, Lily and Farrell. Is that right? Okay. So can I have hands up for councillor Jordan, please? Yes. You can't use both votes for the same person. Our leader to the clerk to make sure nobody votes more than twice. Right, start again then. So don't get people on two votes. Councillor Jordan first. And then for councillor Critchley. And next is for councillor Lily. And then finally councillor Farrell, please. Thank you. So the two candidates who had the most votes are councillor Jordan and councillor Critchley. Congratulations, you're elected. Can the others be deputies?
Congratulations. We can see that democracy working well. Thank you. Well, I'm sure councillor Critchley will represent very well on the New Generation team. And obviously, I still have a link or link as the mayor to very... Anything which is developing as well. So thank you. Can we... So, please, Mr Dent, can we have some order with anything? If there is anything that has been said or placed that would be dealt with after the meeting? Thank you. One representative to the Historic Ride Society. Do I have any... Okay. Well, we have two nominations. Just one. Councillor Adams, are you happy to be there? Thank you. Thank you. One representative to the Community Rail Party. Thank you. And two representatives to the Ride Access Advisory Forum. Can I have any... Anybody wish to be on the Ride Access Advisory? Quite important under disability. Councillor Lyons. Okay, well, we'll leave at the wake of the time being. One representative to aspire that struck through with the Finance Committee. Twenty-three, calendar meetings twenty nineteen to twenty to agree the attached calendar meetings as in your file. Okay, is there agreement? Can I have a show of hands? Thank you. Twenty-five minutes to take as read and confirm as accurate the attached minutes of the meeting. Oh, no. Sorry, it's lived there. I will learn. Thank you. Twenty-four, general power of competence to confirm that Ride Council needs the two required criteria to eligibility at the time of this meeting to exercise a general power of competence and to approve the adoption of a general power of competence for twenty nineteen twenty. Okay, can I have a proposer? Councillor Chapman, a second. Councillor Adams. Can we have a show of hands if we agree? Thank you. Twenty-five minutes to take as read and confirm as accurate the attached minutes of the meeting held on Monday, first break of two thousand and nineteen. Okay. So we have a vote. Extentions to... Can we now go through to item twenty-six to receive any reports from the police? Have any stake here, anything?
We've had apologies, chairman, from Sergeant Sam Warren, but he has told me that if any member has a question for him, he'd be very pleased to receive it and respond to it either directly to the sergeant or by myself.
Do we have any questions from members that would like to go to the police or now or after the meeting? I have one myself, which is in my ward. Actually, there has been incidences particularly with the beach soccer, which you might have seen as reported, where there was some vandalism. So I would like to know particularly from the police regarding that because obviously, there's a lot of hard work that goes into the beach soccer. And I think the vandalism originally was of the toilets particularly. This was unacceptable, so I just felt... Yes, sorry, I meant the police. Thank you. It's important to know that it was actually literally two nights and actually made that very difficult for that event. You obviously want those events on a beach. And so, Chris.
Can you use the mic?
Now, the weather's getting warmer. We're starting to get people in five-way shelter again. And there was quite a bad case of vandalism about two weeks ago. So if we could just ask the police to make sure they move past it from time to time and check on what's going on there. Because it's... We've had a relief over the winter when it's been too cold to sit in there, but it is now starting to get quite busy again.
Thank you.
I spoke to Sergeant Warren on Friday. He did mention the five-way shelter. There's also been reported to the Islandwide Council to have the meeting.
One to twenty-seven, mayor's announcements. Okay, from the outgoing mayor, thank you.
Thank you. I'll just be brief. I did go to the cat's home to open the wing. And I enjoyed that immensely. I'd like to say how wonderful and hardworking and dedicated we are. We're very lucky, our staff of Rite Town Council. They are superb. And one member of staff is leaving and she's been absolutely marvelous, Grace, who looked after me. I'm afraid you will have somebody else to look after you, but she looked after me during the year and I'm indebted to her. Yep. And just to say that I have a duty to perform on the twenty-second of May, which is the annual town meeting, which we are obliged to have every year. And they're invited to come along to the Garfield Road next hall to... And we'll deal with the report and meet some of the views of some of the organisations of Ride. Thank you.
Again, councillor Ross, can I thank you for all your hard work. Particularly, I think it would be good to note that Grace... It's Morris, isn't it? Grace Morris, who has been an excellent apprentice at the council. She's also been very good to me in my short term as deputy mayor. And she's going to a job in Southampton, Southampton Council. So can we note to thank her for her dedication? And I think it's marvelous that our apprentice has gone on a step up the ladder into her career. So we send her all our best wishes. Thank you. I attended as deputy mayor at the Military College with some of my colleagues here. Councillor Chapman was there. To see the sort of parade out of young people, particularly that are going to take a career in the services. And I was extremely impressed how many of the young people who had actually failed GCSEs, things, had actually got exams, got their various qualifications and were actually entering the forces. In fact, the number of them were actually entering Royal Marines, which is a very high, you know, very high standard. So the fact that actually young people from there were actually managing that standard. But it was an extremely pleasant experience. And I was just really moved by some of the personal stories, some of the young people that overcome great difficulties to get to their ambitions. Some of the young people weren't going into the forces, but they were going on to careers. So it was... I do recommend members about your future to sort of go. It's just really good. Okay, can I go on to item twenty-eight? Ride Harbour Working Party to receive attached notes of the working party meeting held on the seventh of February. Just receiving information. Thank you. Item twenty-nine, Planning Committee to receive the attached notes of the Planning Committee meetings held on the nineteenth of March and the ninth of April. Can we notice? Thank you. Twenty, Finance Committee to receive the attached notes of the Finance Committee meetings held on the nineteenth of February and the twenty-sixth of March and consider the recommendations arising from the committee meeting held on the twenty... Twenty? The ninth of April. Can I ask you, councillor Wakeley?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Before you, two recommendations, members. First of all, that members are asked to note the awarding of a contract for the Beacon Magazine. And then the second item, the winter decorative lighting Ride High Street, that the contract waiver of the council's contract standing orders for the award of a contract to Ghana Lighting Limited be awarded and that the clerks be given authority to award the contract to Ghana Lighting at eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty. For that, I should require members' support, please. So do I have a second? Thank you. That's from Sue. And may I ask any questions? If there being no questions, then for members to share their approval, please, for this recommendation. Thank you. That wasn't... I think that was unanimous, because... Sorry, are those against... Are there any extensions? I thought it was unanimous. I had to wait up late after you'd gone, gone round. I thought that was the case. Thank you, members.
Thank you, councillor Wakeley. The item thirty-one, the Sensory Impairment Working Group to receive the attached notes of the meeting for the sixth of December and the attached recommendations arising from the meeting the working party held on the third of May. I will hand over to councillor Wakeley again.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, there's been a fair bit of work going on with this Sensory Impairment Working Party. And the clerks have had to do a fair bit of digging around to give us the kind of information that we need. And that has enabled us to come forward with a recommendation for council that you have before you. I'm happy to take any questions on this. If there are no questions, so there is...
I did ask the clerk some time back about the possibility, and tonight was perhaps demonstrated even more so, why we're not filming these meetings? And I was assured that... I was informed rather, I'm sure, that it was being covered under this working party. It doesn't appear to be.
You are, I'm behind you.
Oh!
But not officially, I'm an unofficial...
There is a question there, though, if I may respond to councillor Jordan. I think the matter that you're probably referring to, rather than a third party filming the town council proceedings, which they have an entitlement to be able to do, is about the town council itself undertaking that task. And that is being researched. And we will be coming back with that. But there are all sorts of issues that it gives rise to which are currently being explored. So you can expect a further paper coming from this Impairment Working Party, which will outline the basis upon which, maybe, we will be able to undertake our own recording of these proceedings, as well as any members of the public doing so. If there being no further questions, then I commit this paper to you, members. And I think I'm hoping to ask you to vote on this. So formally, I propose the recommendations of the working party. Do I have a second, please? Thank you. Are those in favour? I think we're having a unanimous vote on that, chair.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Wakeley. And can I thank yourself, councillor Lucioni, and other members of the Pimco Control and their dedication and good work. So thank you. The thirty-two, Ride Regeneration Working Group to receive an update from the town council... The thirty-two, Ride Regeneration Working Group to receive an update from the town council's representative on the Ride Regeneration Working Group, which have been up until night, councillor Phil Jordan and councillor Lily, myself. Can councillor Jordan, would you like to give the update?
Chair, I believe, as much as you're in these papers, that the minutes were sent out from our first meeting. Our second meeting is on Monday. So there's not much more to tell any of you, other than the minutes that you've already had. At the time of the meeting here, I had proposed, since the regeneration group itself undertook a walk along the front of Ride, which I found so helpful, that I proposed that any of the councillors that are at all remotely interested in the regeneration of our town should join myself and others for a walk around the front and the Aspernay to see at first hand some of the problems that we are confronted with on the regen route, right up close. Because from a distance, it's a different perspective. So that's why that's on the bottom of the table. I'd like to make that invitation and through the clerk set up a meeting for us to do that. Obviously, I can't insist that you come, but I would very much like the councillors that have any interest. So at some point, all of you are going to have to vote on proposals that come through here. I want to make sure that you know what the actual situation is before you put your hand in there, or not.
Is there formal, there seems to be a formal proposal, can I have a second? Okay, from councillor Chapman. Okay, Lou, thank you, seconded. Can we actually have a vote of hands? Any against, any abstentions? One abstention. Okay, two. Yeah.
Thank you, colleagues, for that, by the way, for the one through the clock.
Can we go to item thirty-three? Payments to agree payments of those invoices shown on appendix one. Can I have a proposer? A second one? Can we have a vote, please? Two, to those appendix shown on appendix two, which have been made outstanding in the thirty-eight being seen. Can I have a proposer? Councillor Chapman? So, the note, and thirty-four, the date of the next meeting is Monday, the third of June, 2019, at Isfany. Thank you. Can I just lastly say that councillor Ross raised the issue of the AGM, Ride AGM meeting... Sorry, the town meeting. I wish to speak to the unspeakable two electeds. Please come along to that meeting next week. I know that some of the organisations, like Ride Society and the Ride Crisis Association have given a report. So please come to that meeting. I'm on my way to meeting, thank you.